Good evening and welcome to the September 12th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you that are with us in the audience tonight and those that are viewing things on television. We're glad to have you with us as well. We're gonna stand and be led in our pledge tonight by Bailey Embry, a kindergarten student at Mitchell Nielsen, along with her brother Keegan Embry, who is a little leader in the Little Sprouts program at Mitchell Nielsen, and also Ezra Rosser, a kindergarten student from John Pittard Elementary, who came to our country two years ago from the Congo. I will ask you to please stand followed then by a moment of silence.
I pray that you do your part and not to make up. And not always return, not mention to God and April, not to the nature for all.
And now our moment of silence. Thank you. All right, board members, you have a copy of the agenda in front of you. I'm going to ask before we approve that agenda to be able to move the report on advanced ed up until into the first item under action items, which would be before we get into board policies. If that's no objection, I'll have a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you very much. All right, communications.
Ms. Trail?
Good evening. Mitchell Nielsen School. Media specialist Katie Capshaw will be making a presentation at the Tennessee Association of School Librarians Conference. Katie is on the committee, she's a committee chair for this group as well, so we appreciate her representing Murfreesboro City Schools. We'd also like to thank New Vision Church for their donation of $250 towards a purchase of precase supplies. We had quite a list of people who helped with those supplies that were listed last month and we wanted to catch up and make sure that we gave New Vision a shout out as well. Murfreesboro City Schools also received two grants for the children and families in our community. The first grant in the amount of $10,000 will provide three training sessions for 35 parents of children from age one to five. The training sessions are provided to help families prepare their children for kindergarten, and this is called Ready for Kindergarten. Ms. Brooks is going to be speaking a little bit more about that in just a little bit, so I'll leave that for her. The second grant also is for reading. It's for $4,000 and it's for the Magic Book Bus. We're gonna be repurposing one of our old retired school buses as a mobile library. So we are excited about that. It will also cover wifi on the library, so it not only will have books, but it'll have access to the internet. A couple of more announcements. On Friday, September 15th, that's this Friday, Murfreesboro City Schools will be hosting our Hope for Houston campaign. The schools, all 12, 13 schools, will collect money for the American Red Cross to assist victims of the hurricanes. And that money will be collected at the school sites and then given to the Red Cross. Also, the City School Foundation's Back to School Dash is this Saturday, September 16th. It begins at 7:00 a.m. We are looking, expecting about 150 to 200 runners. If anyone wants to volunteer and meet us at 6:00 a.m., we will welcome you there. MTSU is also hosting the men and women's tennis. Will be providing a free tennis clinic for Murfreesboro City School students in grades two through six. This will be held on Thursday, September 21st at the Buck Bolden Tennis Center from 5:00 until 6:30. This is about the, I think, sixth clinic that MTSU tennis has offered for us, and it's always well attended, and we appreciate not only the coaches, but those students, college students who are out there really showing our young students how to play. We also want to invite you to join us for Reading in Schools Day. Reading in the Schools Day is Friday, September 22nd. I'm pretty sure all of you have received invitations to come join us in the classroom. We hope you can make time for that. And then lastly, I want to just remind everyone that we have our next town hall meeting. It is scheduled for September the 19th. I think that's already on all of your calendars. It will be held at Mitchell Nielsen Elementary, and it covers Mitchell Nielsen, Northfield, John Pittard, and Irma Segal. And that is all of my announcements.
I want to commend whoever had the idea for the Hope for Houston on Friday. I think it's a wonderful thing for our young people to become involved and to see what they can do to help and realize that they can help, even with real small donations. Hopefully, we will be able to do a lot with the financial support that we're able to send for these people, not only in Houston, but also now we're seeing it in Florida and some places in Georgia as well. I know there is a massive, what's it called, hand-to-hand tonight at 7:00 on all major television networks. And Nashville is one of four cities that will be highlighted that will take part in this nationwide effort to help those people. And it's, the American people have certainly jumped on board to help. And it's been very encouraging too for me to see the number of utility corporations in the state of Tennessee, the old volunteer states volunteering and going not only to Texas, but to Florida and other places as well. So it's good, but I thank you very much and I...
Well, and Dr. Gilbert tagged this one as children helping children, and it certainly is that. So it's nice for our young students to be able to get involved, whether it's with a dollar or $2, just knowing that they're supporting the students that are in Florida and Texas. So we appreciate it.
All right.
Okay, at this time, I'd like for Carissa Dotson to come and give you a presentation about birth to five. This is part of our strategic plan, the idea of working with parents to help them understand how to better help their children with literacy. And as you will see by her slides, this was really, it became a community effort. It was one of those things that we jumped off the cliff and everybody got on board with us. And so that's a good thing.
All right. I think you have the presentation on your e-meeting as well. If I can get it pulled up here. I'm clicking away and nothing's happening. All right. So, this has been a very exciting time for us. And we have really called this Ready, Set, Grow. And in our e-plan for the state, we have six major goals for our district this year, and our Birth to Five initiative is Goal Six. So this is part of the goals that we went over at your board retreat. But this is a major initiative to have children in our community ready for kindergarten. Before they come to us in kindergarten, we'd really like to see good language development, parents reading to their kids, those kind of things. So that's been a very exciting initiative for us. I'm gonna show you a short video clip that really highlights why we need to read to our children and with our children 20 minutes a day. So I'm gonna pull this up. So I really think that is an important message that we send to parents across our community. And we have really begun to kick off a campaign to have every parent reading to their student 20 minutes a day. So I want to show you our two major initiatives. We are part of the Children's Reading Foundation. The Mid Cumberland has a branch off of the National Children's Foundation. Therefore, we're able to access all of their materials, their PR information, and able to use all of the resources that they've already developed. So our two major initiatives are Ready for Kindergarten, which Ms. Trail did mention earlier, and then Reading 20 Minutes a Day. So those are our major initiatives for this year. And as Linda said, we jumped off the cliff for Ready for Kindergarten already. We began our last train, our first training last week, very successful training. We really are working with parents, and they attend three workshops. But the whole purpose of that workshop is for them to purposefully play with their children. And so September 7th was our first. We'll follow up with those same families on October 12th, and then again, those same families on November 9th. So they're divided into age groups, and they receive a training notebooks that has milestones, has different tools for them to use with their children, to play with their children. And they're very nice toys, like puzzles, alphabet letters, alphabet strips, things to really get them ready. But the major focus is we have four volunteers from our district who have gone through the training, and they actually work with parents in really small groups to show them how to use those materials, how to speak with their children, make sure that they have a lot of serve in return. By that, I mean when the child speaks and has an interaction, the parent responds to that interaction. I think Ms. Frank talked about that a lot with you guys in those trauma-sensitive schools presentation you have. And so we really want parents purposefully playing with and really interacting with language with their children. Because what we know is that language is the foundation for kids learning to read. And so when kids come into school and they're lacking those language skills, they have trouble learning to read. So we really want to make sure that we can do all we can for that Birth to Five group. Our first, our first parent training session was extremely successful. We had about 30 families there and 44 children, I believe to be exact, where we provided childcare for them while the parents were in training. We had volunteers from Blackman High School and Central High School who came and really helped us with the kids and interact with the kids. So it was a fantastic night, and it was free for all of our parents, funded through the grant that Ms. Trail mentioned from Richard Segal Foundation. So we would like to expand this. We're gonna have another training, another cohort of parents, so three more training sessions in the spring. We also, it says we'll begin, we have begun as of this week, working in the community. We are working with daycares, ESP, and churches in our community to help us fund those kits. The grant's going to run out, so we're gonna have to keep seeking money so that we can provide this service for our parents. But we're also interested in training daycare workers. And so many of our children spend a lot of time in daycare in that Birth to Five age group, and we really want daycare workers to have that same excellent training as well as our ESP workers. So those are all things that we've begun working on. In addition, we are doing the Read for 20 Minutes. And so, again, this campaign is going to be launched beginning next week with the Read in the Schools Day and Read to a Child Week. So you're gonna start seeing logos for Reading for 20 Minutes that Ms. Trail and her team have already developed. They're fantastic. We'll also be using materials from the Children's Reading Foundation. But the week of September 18th is Read to a Child Week, and September 22nd is our Reading in the Schools Day. And so we really want that message in as many places as we can get it. We've talked about laundromats. We've talked about with our pediatricians. We've talked about with our parents. But we really need parents to understand the importance of pulling your child in your lap, having that good interaction with them, that good positive reading time with their kids. It's such an important factor. But we also are looking at our community and pediatricians. We worked with Dr. Eastham last week and really talked through what that could look like in our community. One of the things we talked about is that at the nine-month checkup, there aren't any immunizations. So that might be a good time for pediatricians to start talking with parents about reading with their kids, partnering with the books to birth, saying, "Have you got this book? You know, this should have come in the mail for you. How have you sat with your child?" And really get pediatricians on that same boat. So we also know that walking clinics have become a huge thing in Murfreesboro, so we'll be making inroads there, but also daycares and churches as well, getting out that Read 20 Minutes a Day to parents. So we want this to be a large campaign. I kind of, in talking with our community this past week, I've likened it to seat belts. So there was a time, my time, we didn't wear seat belts. We rode in the back of the truck, you know? And then it became such a huge campaign that now, like my children, their generation, they don't even think about not getting, not putting on a seatbelt when they get in the car. And they'll even tell other adults, "You need a seatbelt on." And so we want it to be that kind of thing, that reading 20 minutes a day just becomes part of our daily life. And so that's, that's the major things we've been working on with this Goal Six of our e-plan.
Really want to thank United Way, Jessica Cooper in particular, for coming on board with us, and also Read to Succeed in Linnell, and we will be gathering some other community groups, but they were there immediately.
And I wanted to name, we have the four volunteers in our district. Jolene Rednotty, who is in our community outreach. We have Maricela Tapia, who is fantastic working with our Hispanic families. She had 20 families there just for her. And, you know, when she asked people to come, they're excited to come and learn from her. Also Lori Reynolds, who is at Hobgood, works in the front office. When you call Hobgood, she's that sweet voice that answers the phone, just, you know, fantastic person. And also Gina Arnold, who was in DeKalb County. She was the special ed director there. Now she's a preschool teacher at Black Fox. And she was actually the director of the Ready for Kindergarten in DeKalb County. And she has helped us tremendously get this off the ground. So I wanted to say their names out loud because they were such fantastic parents.
Joe wasn't bad, and you weren't too bad with playing in the gym the other night either.
What's that, Joe, playing in the gym? We had a great time with the kids. Forty-four, we started with 44 and ended with 44, so we were happy. And we had all, we had from one-year-olds up to middle schoolers. So it was, it was, it was great to have all the volunteers that came out and helped.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am, very much. Sounds wonderful. It is wonderful.
It is.
All right, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I handed out to you before the meeting, a little flyer on free mini golf. This summer, we were looking for a way to incentivize students to come to school every day because every day matters in Murfreesboro City Schools. So we came up with a program to get a partnership with a business in town to do a free mini golf game for every child that has perfect attendance every month, which means that children have nine opportunities to get perfect attendance or nine opportunities to get a free round of golf. So we have, we put together this program. It started September 1st. And so far, the response on our Facebook page has been tremendous on this. And so we're real pleased with the way it's headed right now. Also, we put together some videos with our mascots. We took our mascots over there, the school mascot, so every school can show their mascot playing miniature golf. Mascots end up being a Pied Piper for kids, and so we want them to see that. Well, I'll let you watch the video and see what we did with it. Linda, is that okay? Can I show them the video?
Would it matter if I said no?
Probably not.
That's right.
You'll watch the video here.
Hi, boys and girls. This is Gopher from Go USA Fun Park. I've invited some of your friends to come and play mini golf. Do you want to play too? If you had perfect attendance this month, you will receive a coupon for a free round of mini golf. Tell your friends and tell your parents, "I want to see you here at Go USA." Remember, every day matters, and every putt matters too. For every month of perfect attendance, you will receive one free game of mini golf. Hope to see you soon.
Well, that was a little video clip we put together. And like I said, every school mascot, we've shot four mascots already. And just so you know, that putt was the first take.
What a mascot we have. It's a bull.
I'm sorry?
Chargers.
The Charger.
Chargers. Case in Lane Chargers for the Bulls. So I need to thank Lisa Trail and Tori Carr and Scott Campbell for helping with the video clips. Scott did the drone, so he got the overhead shots of it. And Lisa and Tori, well, they, they took turns being mascots. Now, we've asked every other school to give us their mascots so we can go shoot them so they can show them for in-house videos.
Are you gonna shoot the mascot?
Linda, Linda, we aren't gonna shoot in that way, Linda.
We all thought the same.
That's right.
Basically, it's a 30-second spot for the kids to see in the morning to remind them. And it's a nine-month program. Each month stands alone. So we're real excited to see if this helps the kids focus on attendance. What they're going to get is, and I blew this up, it's the size of a business card, a pass that they'll be given to take. We're gonna be handing them out each month so they can take them over there and get a free round of golf. So anyone have any questions about this program? Or did you want to see the video again, Linda?
The video's good. Go USA, is there a charge back to us? Or they've just been really nice, and I know it's gonna help their...
They are not charging us anything for this. They partnered with us on this.
Another good partnership.
It, we're certainly hoping to be a good partnership. We are requiring that parents stay with the kids because we don't want our kids running around the park. So that's part of the, an adult has to be with the child when they go. So that's one of the stipulations we put into it.
Mr. Barrett? How good are the passes good for, the little cars?
Passes are good until June 30th. So they can get one in September, and they have one whole month after school is out to use it. And so it gives the kids a lot of opportunities.
Yeah, that's great.
I've heard some, I'm sorry, I've heard some real enthusiasm.
Good. I'm glad. Thank you.
I didn't know if there'd been any traction on board members getting a pass if we attend all our meetings. I kind of threw that out there a little bit.
Only if you dress up in a mascot.
Yeah, you gotta dress as a mascot.
Do we need to determine what you'll dress up?
I am willing to do whatever. Within reason.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and thank the Golf USA too. There you go. That's a tremendous sponsorship.
Yes.
For all of our students.
Those are your communications.
All right. Thank you, ma'am, very much. All right, consent items. We will, I have a motion to approve the consent items. We have any questions?
I had one question on the school fees.
Okay.
I don't have it pulled up, but I do know that there was a difference in the land between the lakes. One school paid $150 and another two schools are paying $215 for the same trip.
I can answer that.
Okay.
Okay, they're going for one extra day. Schools, so they got extra food, they got extra lodging, they have extra programming. They also have half the number of students that are going as the other entity. Therefore, the cost on the bus is, ends up being divided by the number of students. And that's how you get your differences on those.
Okay. The Special Olympics bowling and the practices, how long does that go on? And when is, is the Special Olympics bowling part of, when we have the Special Olympics at university? Okay, okay. That's a good thing to, and is that, that's at Smyrna? Does Smyrna Bowling Lanes help us out on that as well for practices?
And Special Olympics helps on that too.
Yeah, very good. I'm gonna tell you what, we've got some tremendous partnerships in this community.
And does the Smyrna Bowling Lane still give, like, cards like they did before for good grades? That's amazing.
Do they? Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
To approve.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settle. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposition? And there is none. All right, action items, and we want to move to the top of the list before we get into our board policies, our discussion of Advanced Ed.
I'm gonna let Sherri, this was brought up by Ms. Rainier, and it was also something that the board discussed when we were working on the budget. So Sherri, I'm gonna let you discuss Advanced Ed.
Good evening, board. It's hard to believe, but in the fall of 2013, we had our Advanced Ed visit, and that time has come around once more. It will be in the fall of 2018. So we thought it might be a good time just to share some information with you concerning Advanced Ed, what it is. Currently, we pay each year $11,700 for our dues. That is a yearly fee. When they come for a visit, it's an additional $5,000. So in the fall of '18, we'll be looking at the $11,700 plus an additional 500, or 5,000, excuse me. When they are here, it is a team of about five or six. They, since we are now a district visit, they come to the district office. Before they come though, we have to begin well in advance preparing for their visit. We have to meet with each school. We have five indicators that we have to fill out basically online, which does require lots, lots of time. We do that. We present that to the team that comes in. They visit three to four schools during the three days that they are here. And then they come back on that third day and give us a score out of a possible 400. The last time they were here, I believe our score was 263 overall out of a possible 400. They are a team of educators, retired educators and present educators. They are not from the state of Tennessee. They can't, we can't do a visit in our own state. So they are from different states that come in and visit. So I just wanted to give you that background information to let you know because it is coming up again, to be thinking about that. One of the positives from it is we are able to survey stakeholders. We are able to survey parents, students, and teachers. But we also have to think about now, we do have the survey from the Department of Education that we can give each year. And they're all about continuous improvement, which is what we want to, you know, get information from so that we can improve. But we do have different means now that we can use, you know, instead of Advanced Ed, if you chose to go that route.
Several, several districts, every year there's a discussion amongst superintendents, and several districts have dropped it, particularly the elementary districts because the requirements from the state now are really stiffer than Advanced Ed. So when, the accountability that the state has for us is much more stringent than what the accountability for Advanced Ed. The, the advantage is primarily now is really the survey.
Correct.
But, but that survey now with what we have with the teacher survey that's online and also the climate survey that you all looked at that we could pick up if we needed to. And both of those are free of charge. And those, the teacher survey's gonna be done anyway. The state's gonna do that.
Absolutely.
So it's, it's really a lot of work for the schools. It's a lot of work for the district. And the meaning is not there that there once was when the state did not have the accountability.
All right, I think, I know we have some questions.
Okay.
I remember this discussion a little bit from last year when you're talking about Advanced Ed. My question had to do with how are the schools chosen that they visit? Do we choose them? Do they, is there a grant, is there?
The visiting team actually chooses the schools that they wish to visit. We have no say, you know, they choose. They typically would choose, last year they chose, or the last visit, Discovery, Bradley, and I believe Segal, possibly. Maybe Mitchell Nelson. They, they, and very, they break off into two different teams at that point and go different.
And they just?
Yes, sir. And we, we are responsible for travel. We're responsible for picking them at the airport, and then traveling them around to?
In addition to the $5,000 for the privilege?
I mean, yes, it's part of that.
My question, I get, this next question is more for Dr. Gilbert. How many other districts are still using Advanced Ed? I know you just mentioned about?
I don't have any idea. No, I know that several, several are not. At one time, you had most of the districts using it, but that was before the accountability came in, because it, it did have to do with, with improvement. But now with what the reporting that we have to do for the state, which is based around, I guess, most of the things, if not all. Advanced Ed at one time, when it was the Southern Association, it had to do with making sure there were enough library books, making sure that there were enough personnel. But when BEP came in in particular, and particularly with the accountability that came in the last 10 years. Now they're really, for an elementary district in particular, and I would say even for a K-12 district. The, the value of it is just not there that was once there, because you have an outside, you have outsiders already coming in and, and, and doing all that.
I guess I'd be?
You hear the state sits down with us and, you know.
It's a quick snapshot for people, for the visiting team coming in.
I, I would be interested to know how many districts our size maybe still use it. I don't know if there's a way to find out, so we just ask around. That would be interesting to know.
Ms. Smith?
So I was on the board when they came last time, and I did think that there was value in the meeting, you know, where we got the feedback from the outside parties. But what did they do all the other years? On the other years? For $11,700.
Really? All that's available for, I mean, there's probably more, but what we utilize is the surveys, or the surveys.
I can do a whole lot with $11,700 if you?
That, that's on a yearly basis, that's what we?
But I did, I did think that the survey and their coming in, and it wasn't just a survey, but it was their coming in and evaluating the schools in an unbiased way. I thought that was very helpful. Is there any other thing that we are using that isn't, you know, an outside party coming in?
Really, what you would have would be the state coming in. I suppose, Joe, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you discuss a little bit about E-Plan and the state and when they do visits, because they do come in and visit with us several times a year, as far as setting goals, reaching those goals. And now it's, it's expanded beyond just, just the?
And I do remember in my former professional life, preparing?
Right.
For this, and there is a lot of work?
Right.
That goes into it by lots of different staff members. So, I mean, I understand both sides of this, so yeah, I'll be interested to hear.
Every, every year the state does what we call a desktop monitoring, and that's where they look at our plan, and they look at our programs. We submit information to them, and then they come back. Now, as far as an ending evaluation of that, with any sort of numbers we don't get, we just either get that it's thumbs up, or, or there's, there's a problem. And so last year, we didn't have any problems with that whatsoever. That's a little bit different than the, than the type of Advanced Ed, but what, what they do, what the state does is looks, they provide, the state provides assistance, technical assistance to us, to help us prepare those plans and make sure we're, they're monitoring those plans and then following through on those plans. So that's, I think that's what you're talking about, Dr. Gilbert.
So we, they look at, but they look at climate, they look at special ed, they look at ELL, they look at all of our stuff.
They look at our homeless programs, they look at our, you know, those, all, all the parts and pieces of our, of the, of the program.
Now, Advanced Ed does that, is what you're saying?
I was talking about the, what the state does.
What the state does.
That's what the state does. Now, and they also will monitor us on a, on a visit basis periodically. So that's not, it's not on two or three or four-year cycle, we just never know for sure. And that's when they come, and they'll audit, they'll look at the fiscal part, as well as the programmatic part. So, so I guess that's, I think that's what you're, you're referring to, Dr. Gilbert.
I just wanted them to have a picture of what, of what the state does now, which is very different than what we had when we first started.
Then on the other side, the accountability part, that's, that's all looked at. That's, comes from our testing, and, and then they look to, to see how we are performing as a district and so forth.
Mr. Ballard?
Sherri or Joey, the one, does the, or, Dr. Gilbert, the, the Advanced Ed school survey that we're talking about, that's different from the teacher survey, right?
Yes, sir. The school survey actually surveys students. You can pick a cohort of grade levels and go, you know, track them from, you know, the second grade, then you would survey them in third grade, and then in fourth grade.
So it would be more similar to the climate survey that we discussed last year that we almost did.
So I would imagine that what they offer is probably some set of national norms that we're compared against, whereas the state of Tennessee wouldn't do that, I would imagine. The state of Tennessee wants you to meet the requirements of the state of Tennessee. They don't care about whether we meet the requirements of Georgia or Alabama.
Yes, they do, in that, we are monitored federally, since we receive federal funds, so we have to meet federal standards. When we talk about norming, that's two different things, when you talk about national norms. But those are, we, we are required to, to, as a state, to follow those norms, and then that's, that's, that's funneled down to us, basically. So there is a national?
That would be the only thing that I'm always, I'm interested to know how we do outside of our borders when we're compared to, on national levels. But if we can achieve that and get that, you know, I can see that you may have some redundancy. And also know that these things do take a lot of time, and I know that time is taken away from the students when you're, you're using so much of your time to prepare for something that it's like, it's over with when they leave. You put them on the plane to go home, you're like?
We were very excited. When it was Southern Association, we used to have to do the crates, and each school had a number of crates, you know, filled with information. And when it went to online, we were, this is great, but it turns out to be just as much, if not more, when we have the crates.
And I may be missing it, and, and I'm okay with hearing that, I'm missing it. They come in, they do a type of survey, they ask questions, we send them information. They compile, what I'm looking at is a consultant, and they send a report back to us and give us their opinion of how our schools are faring. Our district is faring. And we take that information and put it in our planning for the next year, or whatever it needs to happen. The same thing also happens through the state of Tennessee, that it's gonna come in and do the same thing. However, the standards for Advanced Ed may not meet the stringency of the state of Tennessee. Am I getting it right?
Yes, sir, parts, yes, you are.
In, in general, and I'm, I'm kind of a, you know, I'm a broad strokes type person.
Absolutely.
So then, and we're paying $11,000 a year for the privilege of being a part of this, and then $5,000 extra dollars to have them come in and do it. And as an added bonus, as a freebie, value-added service, we get a survey that we can also get for free to other places.
Well, it, it is part of their accreditation, yeah.
Yeah, it's part, it's part of that, $11,000, $5,000, which is $16,000 if I'm adding correctly.
That, that $5,000 of when they come in is airline? And travel, meals, hotel, and all of that.
Got you.
One reason that I think?
Every five years?
For the $5,000?
One reason.
The $5,000 is?
I think that Ms. Renee wanted to bring this up now, is because we'll actually be preparing this spring for next fall, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do it.
Ms. Smith?
Do we need a motion to, can we make a movement on this, or a decision or not?
Let's see if we have some, any other discussion.
I do.
We will get a motion, or it doesn't matter, you can do either one. Advanced Ed is just what took over after Southern Association.
Yes, sir.
And where Southern Association, we looked more at the southeast, didn't we, mostly? And now Advanced Ed is nationwide.
That's correct.
Okay. And I don't remember Southern Association costing?
It's a lot of money.
I served on some of those visiting teams, and I never got that kind of rebuttals. Maybe I wasn't good enough, I don't know. Mr. Barrett?
What are the participation rates for those surveys that Advanced Ed hands out to us? Do you know?
They have to be 80% in order to be valid.
Okay.
So each school, we have to have 80% of our students, of our teachers and of our parents.
And do we usually hit that?
Yes, sir.
Really? Oh, because the state one, it's only what, 50, we saw what, 48, 49?
45.
45. Why, why the difference? Is it because one's from the state, and the other one's from something different?
Well, we're really pushing for that to be valid, because it is part of the accreditation when they come in. So we, we do all sorts of different types of media in order for them to take it. We'll put it out during parent conference day, so they can take it there. Lisa Trail has always been very kind to make all calls, so we, we really do push it during that, during that visit.
Okay. And you said they give feedback on their visit. Is there any actionable items that come out of that feedback that we actually act on? Or, I mean, give, give an example of like something they said five years ago that we've acted on and we've improved?
One of them was our professional development. They, again, they're all about a continuous improvement. So we were offering lots of professional development, but they felt that we weren't determining if those professional development sessions were, were helpful to teachers. So we have now, we then put a survey at the end of each professional development, so that we get feedback from our teachers to make sure that we're, you know, providing what they need, and we're following that in continuous improvement.
And the variety, because I know over the past two years, you've been off, Joe's been good about promoting that, but the variety of stuff we've offered.
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
Is there a positive result of having Advanced Ed and getting a high ranking with Advanced Ed? Is there anything? I mean, you know, used to Southern Association, if you were accredited, that was a major thing. Is there that today?
No, I don't think so. I think if you talk to other superintendents, and, and like I said, for the last two years, I know there's a listserv that if there's a question, that you can send out to all superintendents. And both years, there have been quite, quite a few districts that have just said, we don't see the point. There was one time that the high schools, there was a real advantage to have the accreditation, but I'm not sure that's true anymore with, with high schools. Gary, do you?
Back years ago, when it, when it was Southern Association, if it was accredited high school, it received more recognition from the universities. Today, what the university's looking for is totally different than what it used to be just a few years ago, so.
We've had some good discussion. Do we have a motion? Ms. Smith?
I move that we no longer use?
Advanced Ed.
Advanced Ed. I was about to say Saks, but I missed Advanced Ed, so.
All right, you have a motion to not participate with Advanced Ed. Do I have a second to that motion?
A second.
It's settled, second. Now, we ain't have more discussion. We got a second.
You have the second first.
You can discuss, though.
Okay. I'd like to know the recommendation of Sherri and Dr. Gilbert. Joe, what's your, I mean, you've presented it to us, what was the point in presenting it?
I know hers. I'm a face reader.
You know, it's always good to get feedback, and it's good to have others come in to see what we're doing well, and to see what we need to do to improve. But I feel like that through things that we are putting in place, that we are receiving an opportunity for feedback. I don't, you know, it's up to you as a board, but I will do, whatever.
Mr. Barrett?
So the state only surveys teachers and principals, they don't survey students and?
There's a climate survey that we looked at last year, and we almost did, but, and we will have, the, the Advanced Ed survey will have again this year. It will be next year, because we've already, we have our dues paid. It's just that we will not have to prepare for the visit and go through the visit. So there would be plenty of time for the board to look at another survey, and, and the climate survey is one that I think we really considered. And it does, doesn't it, Joe, have this?
Climate survey, if you remember last year when we were talking about surveys, it does parents, students and, and teachers.
And I think educational assistants, I think sports staff too.
It gives us really quick feedback.
It's very comprehensive, from what I remember.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Call the roll, please, ma'am.
Mr. Bauer?
Aye.
Mr. Barrett?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Mr. Settles?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your explanation. Appreciate it.
And we will continue to, as, as far as outside, getting outside opinions, that, that will not be a problem. In fact, we, we could put, really put together something ourselves from, with outside folks that would, from other areas, if, if the board chose to do that.
All right, we have several policies to look at. Now, what I have, Mr. Ringstaff, I don't know who all he was able to talk to in the last couple of days, but I have asked Ralph to go through, and with each policy, if there was, the board members that he contacted, if there was a question about that policy, he's gonna give us their question and the answer. And then if no, if there are no questions, then other than that, then we will move on, and we will not, we will not have long discussions. I don't know how many of the policies on second reading. Ralph?
Joe? Did y'all approve those on the consent agenda?
Uh, no, they're under action items.
Okay. Okay, on the, on the policies on the second reading, I did not get any questions about any of these policies that I wasn't able to answer. It's my recommendation to approve these as a group, those policies on second reading, unless any of you want to pull one or two of these out to discuss. Questions I got were on the policies on the first reading.
Okay. Anyone have a question on any of the policies that are listed for a second reading? Ms. Smith?
On 5115, the, is it, this is second rea, assignment and transfer?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have it pulled up, but I said, it, have we been adhering to the June 15 tentative assignment list date by the director?
Yes, we notify most of the teachers before school is out, the school year is out, the year before, like before May, before Memorial Day. However, at the beginning of the school year, the next year, there are times when we must transfer teachers, depending on where the students end up.
So this policy is not only about, this is also about administrators, correct? 5115? It's not, it, it could be anyone?
There's licensed personnel.
You're gonna, you're gonna have, it would be, and typically, we, we try to make all decisions, the only, the way that I can think of something might happening is, we do have, during the summer, we do have folks that move, for example. Or we may have some that decide that they're gonna take a year of, a leave of absence. Or I know that two years ago, we had a position that opened, and, and one of our principals wanted that position. And so that was, that was certainly after that date. But as far as, as far as non-renewal, as far as transfer, Ralph, we try to get those taken care of by that date, right?
So the other part of 5115 is a part that's not in the policy, and I know, is that, I wish that a part of the process, so when, when someone is getting transferred, that there was some conversation with that person, so they could, you know, say, that's a good idea or not. that there was some conversation with that person so they could, you know, say, "That's a good idea," or "Not a good idea." So that they could have, as, as we're also talking in the policies about job satisfaction, I just, I would like to see that a faculty member would have the opportunity to say, "This is why I would think that's a good idea," or "This is why I would like to stay."
We have, when do we send out transfer for transfer requests, Ralph? Slaying that to the board?
We ask teachers, we send out an email to all teachers, and in fact, classified as well, classified employees, around March. Uh, February, March, to see if they would like to request a transfer from one School A to School B. We ask them to list the schools that they would like to be transferred to. They don't have to go through the principal, they just send it to me directly. I compile a list and I give them a deadline. The deadline is usually the week after spring break to give them that much time to consider it. And then we, as administrators, we give it to principals plus central office to see if we can accommodate those requests. There are times when we can, there are times when we cannot for the efficient operation of the school system. Uh, we, we try to, but if, if we can't, we can't. Then there are times when we force a transfer teacher A, I mean, School A to School B because projected enrollment, other reasons that, and I do have, we do have conversations, either the principal and I, or the principal, we have conversations with the teacher to explain that they're going to be transferred before the school year is out.
But did they get, did they have the opportunity to give you input?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, that, I just want to make sure that we, it's, you know, we're looking out for our teachers and they get it, they have the option to provide input. So on this policy, is it only, it says licensed personnel, does that not include assistant, assistant principals?
The licensed personnel.
That's what I think. So, so do they have input when they're moved?
Sometimes, and sometimes they don't. Because it, it boils down to the, it boils down to what's the efficient, for example, if I have an, if I have an assistant principal that's moving, you're probably going to have a committee that, that does an interview for that if we're hiring a new assistant principal, but it boils down to having to make that decision. Now typically, I'm going to involve a principal in that decision, but I can think of a time when I did have to move a principal that, an assistant principal that I said, basically, you have a choice of these two folks because of the way that the numbers were working. Whenever there's, whenever there's administrative move, when there's a principal or assistant principal move, a lot of times, it creates a domino effect. Because if you're shifting one principal into, or an assistant principal into a position, someplace that you think that they're going to better serve the district, then you're winding up with an opening there that you've got to fill. So it, it does become a conversation with what do you think is best for your school, and, and it has to do with knowing the schools. But it also, there are times where we, where teachers have talked to us and asked for transfers, and that may not be necessarily shared, or where I know there's a situation where there needs to be a transfer. I can think of times when, when a principal may have talked to me about a situation, or we're looking at the scores, or we're looking at the makeup of the grade. But it's, it's not a willy-nilly decision. It's a
I also remember a time or two where an assistant principal has served under one principal and
That's right.
they've expressed an interest to move up to a principal level and they need experience under another principal or another school.
Yeah.
So that, that's happened several times.
That answer your question?
It answers my question. It doesn't.
Doesn't satisfy you, but it answered.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Ms. Settles?
I was going to point out in line fourteen and fifteen, I think we're pretty much covered. Mostly line fifteen, transfers shall be non-discriminatory and shall not be arbitrary or capricious. So I, I think I'm satisfied with what Dr. Gilbert has given us along with Ralph. I was shocked to see Ralph sitting over there. I thought we had a new board member, but fool with me.
I'd rather sit down and stand up on the podium for a couple hours.
I've got a lot of papers to go through. But yeah, I think in that position, you know.
All right, any other, we have a motion and a second to approve the policies on second reading.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready for the question.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. All right, thank you very much. All right. Policies on first reading.
First policy, we have vacation and holidays, five-point-three-one-zero. The first part is TSBA's recommendation. They, we listed the holidays that Murfreesboro City Schools have. As you can see, we have some that are all, all holidays for everyone. Then we have Memorial Day for the eleven and twelve-month employees, and Independence Day, twelve-month employees only. The hol- the other holidays are for everyone. And then the rest of this policy is purbatim of our existing vacation policy, PER twenty-nine. We like that it applies to Murfreesboro City School employees more than what TSBA recommended.
So really, the only thing we've added are the holidays listed.
True.
All right, you had questions on that policy or not?
No, sir.
I think you did.
Okay.
I wonder who asked that question.
My question was, what, we have Thanksgiving Day and the day after Thanksgiving, okay? So my question was, what is the day before Thanksgiving considered? And it is basically a day out of the calendar, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not a holiday, it's just a day of no pay?
Okay.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Is that right? Okay. I knew you had that question.
If you don't mind, please remind me of any others that I forget.
Wait a minute, say that again?
Please remind me of any others that I accidentally forget.
That's right, that's right. All right. Do we want to vote on these individually? I guess we need to?
Yes, sir.
All right. So do I have a motion to approve policy five-point-three-one-oh, vacations and holidays?
So moved.
Mr. Ballard, move to approve, have a second?
Second.
Mr. Barrett, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposition? And there is none. All right, next policy.
We have HIV, the policy five-point-four-one, and I did not get any questions on that.
And this is exactly like PER thirteen.
I do have a motion to approve policy five-point-four-one.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposition? There is none. Thank you, next policy.
Mr. Chair, I would like to change the title of that policy to HIV instead of AIDS. If that, if the board is okay with that for second reading?
Change four-oh-two?
Four-oh-one, five-point-four-one, from AIDS to HIV.
Okay.
If that's okay with the board.
Anybody object to that? All right.
Sounds appropriate.
Okay, four-oh-two?
Four-oh-two, hepatitis B, five-point-four-two. I did not have any questions on that one.
And there was one change that you added, line ten.
Yes, yes, and we do that.
Okay.
And the lines twenty-two through twenty-six, the verbiage of that is, is from our, our policy PER thirty-four.
All right, do I have a motion to approve policy five-point-four-two?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposition? And there is none.
The next policy is five-point-five-zero-zero, discrimination, harassment of employees, sexual, racial, ethnic, religious. This is a very important policy. And it follows state, federal laws almost to a T. The fed- line seventeen, it describes, it lists the job titles of the individuals who would investigate any claims of discrimination or harassment. The federal rights coordinator, that would be Angela Fairchild, and the assistant superintendent for human resources, that would be me. They, I, I don't, I think it's in this policy or another policy, they want a male and a female, a person from each gender, just so anybody is comfortable with coming forward. I think that's the one question that I had on that policy. Any questions, please? Yes?
I just have one, and it's probably going to be very small and I'm going to be a little nitpicky, because you did say this came from federal policy. Starting with line number fourteen, alleged victims of sexual, racial, ethnic, and religious discrimination slash harassment shall report these incidents immediately. The report should be made to the immediate supervisor, except when the immediate supervisor is the offending party. My question is, should they not say alleged offending party? Because at this point, it's still an allegation.
You're correct. You are correct. We can put that. Okay, I recommend approval as noted.
Do I have a motion to approve five-point-five-hundred?
I'm sorry, it's in there twice, so I just want to make sure. In the middle of the line, if the immediate supervisor again is the offending party, so I just want to make sure that you catch it on both.
Sixteen, line sixteen?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay.
You see that, Ralph?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve the policy with the changes?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Settles, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next policy.
Okay, that would be five-point-five-oh-one, complaints and grievances. I've had a couple questions. This is, this policy is a little different than PER twenty-eight. PER twenty-eight goes into more detail. And that policy is the one that we have on our MOU, purbatim, it's word-for-word in the, in the MOU. I don't know if you want to not have this policy. I like, I like this policy. I like how it's, the lines eighteen through twenty-second, it defines what's, what's available. And then just keep what's in our MOU, it's PER twenty-eight, we can, we can definitely keep what's in MOU and still have this policy that you're currently looking at. That's what I would recommend. There are very little differences. There's really only one difference I can think of. The only one difference I can think of is line thirty-seven, and we would need to change that instead of within ten days. The PER twenty-eight has five days.
Ralph, that MOU can change, though, every three years, right?
Every three years, yes. We're, we're bound by it for three years.
So are we better to put that into an AD so it can change? I mean, it's in the MOU, but.
We can keep it in the MOU and just make sure that this abides by that, those same rules.
You say the MOU says
Five days.
five days, and this says ten days?
Yes, sir, on line thirty-seven. If we can make that change, we would be, adhere to the PER twenty-eight and the MOU and the I don't want to change anything on the MOU and want to have different policies.
Right.
Also, a question was brought up. Appointing complaint managers is at the very end of this policy. Should we have it closer to the front to let people know who to contact if they have a complaint or grievance?
That was my suggestion, only because they start talking about complaint managers, I'm like, who's the complaint manager? What is it? Or who, who does it? But it's up to the board.
Where, where would you put that?
Right near the beginning, so you, I mean, it would have to reword it, I guess, but just when I was reading this thing.
We could put it after line thirteen.
Kind of a little backward.
But you can't make that the policy if it's two different, if they have to be different genders.
I'm, I'm, line forty-nine through line fifty-two, we could move that up, use the exact same word.
I'm just moving it up, so.
I know, but it says, in Murfreesboro City Schools, the assistant superintendent of human resources and the sec- and the special education director shall serve as complaint managers.
After you've already said.
We don't know that those people are always going to be male and female.
If, if that changes, then it would be brought up before the board.
Next policy.
Okay.
But you could, you could insert appointing complaint managers. You could do that right before harassment and discrimination grievances.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
What you're saying?
Yes, yes, sir.
I have a question, kind of with Ms. Smith. Is it necessary to specify that in Murfreesboro City School, the assistant superintendent of human resources and special education director shall service complaint managers after we've said that the director of schools shall appoint at least two complaint managers? Do we have to say that? Or is, is there a reason? Kelly?
It has to be, it doesn't necessarily have to be in the policy, but it has to be available and known to the employees so they know who to contact to make the complaint. This, this may be the, the simplest way to make it available to employees, or it needs to be posted on a website or in some, some format that the employees can easily know who to contact.
I guess I'm just wondering if this doesn't, codifying this kind of locks us in that it has to be this person and this person if we put it in the policy. I understand it as a, a day-to-day function or ease of understanding. I guess my question is if, if it has to be codified in this manner, because it, I mean, is that a requirement?
It's not.
that it is these people, or that's just who it is for us?
I think that's who it is for us.
And I would suggest striking that.
So can we put just that, well, kind of like we have in some others, where it'll be posted in the employee handbook or?
Well, in our annual training, the PowerPoint presentation for harassment and discrimination that every employee is required to take, it lists Ralph Ringstaff and Angela Fairchild
Yeah.
as the complaint managers.
I think, I feel safer with that because then it's not a, if something happens or if there's a, a change. Say you moved to new Rochelle, and we don't have a human. That would be sad, but then what's her?
So besides that, okay. So besides that presentation you said you give, is that like an employee handbook somewhere that's going to list those? Okay, that's what I thought. All right.
Okay, Ralph, you and I talked about in this one, we talked about, about the board?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And what was that?
On line thirty-nine, it had, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, "If a complaint of sexual harassment contains allegations involving the director of schools, the written report shall be filed with the board." It had "with the board," period. Mr. Campbell and I, we talked and we added chair, so it'd be more specific.
I agree with that.
And that was the point, just, but my question was, okay, if it goes to the board, who's it go to?
Well, it's
be anybody, but, okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve policy five, five-oh-one with the changes?
Approve.
First reading?
Approve with changes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Settles, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposition? None. Thank you very much. Next policy, Mr. Ringstaff?
Yes, sir. Staff rights and responsibilities, five-point-six-zero-zero. This is the TSBA's recommendation. Mr. Barrett had a question. In PER six, he asked if we should consider putting the first fifteen lines in PER six on this policy. It, the, the statements are great. I like it since, especially since it's our policy. If you want to look at the, that PER six, if you want to go back to the website, or I can read this to you. Yeah, if you're visual, that may not help you as well. But the first fifteen, or we could put this off, or I can add these lines for second reading and see if you like that. Okay, I'll do. Okay, I'll do that. I would recommend approval with me adding the first fifteen lines of P R six.
Have a motion to approve policy five point six hundred?
Approve with changes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? None. Okay. Ralph, I wanna go back, please, sir, to five oh one. For just, just a second, uh, 'cause I think you, you and I discussed this. My question was, is there a time limit on filing a complaint? And according to what Mr. Ringstaff said, there is no time limit.
And I can, yes, sir. I can see it both ways. A person may not feel comfortable or confident to immediately come forward, but they may talk to someone, a counselor or something, a month or two later, and feel strong enough to come forward with an al, you know, complaint or grievance, especially when you're talking about discrimination or harassment. Ms. Baker, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, there's not time limits, however, it is helpful to have in policies that it is a responsibility of employees to make complaints in a timely fashion, and so that the issues can be resolved and corrected as soon as possible. I know that's what we do say in the city's policy. We list what the employees' responsibilities are relative to complaints, because a lot of information does get lost if someone doesn't lodge a complaint.
Do, do we need to insert somewhere in there, pertaining to a timely manner or timely fashion, or...
Well, the, the point, your point is, can we bar somebody from making a complaint if it's not timely? That answer's no. We still have to deal with it and investigate it, but we can encourage people, and during the training, make them understand that the sooner they file the complaint, the faster the problem can be resolved.
Okay. We could add those words in a timely manner on line fifteen of the five point five oh one. Employees should notify any district complaint manager in a timely manner.
Uh huh.
And the definition of timely...
It's not a big thing. I just, that was his question, but I don't know whether the board wants, would you wanna insert that or leave it as is?
I kinda like putting that in there. Like Kelly said, it's, we would still have to, but that encouragement to get it in in a timely manner, especially because there's no, we don't define what a timely manner is. I think that...
The line fifteen would say, "Employees should notify any district complaint manager in a timely manner, if they believe the board, its employees, or agents, so forth."
Yes, sir.
Do we need a motion for that?
We've already approved that. I can just add it for the second reading.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we got a second here.
Okay. Conflict of interest, five point six oh one. We did not, well, I did get one question, Mr. Barrett. He had a good suggestion. It talks about, uh, employees may not purchase, for sale to students, any goods, equipment, but there may be questions from time to time whether or not it's a conflict of interest. So Mr. Jarrett suggested we add a statement at the very end. "If there is a question about what is considered a conflict of interest, comma, the employee should contact the office of the director of schools."
Yeah. 'Cause I know at my work, we have an ethics outline that you can call anonymously, and I know we don't have that, but, you know, if there's ever a question, employees should know that they, they should just call and ask.
I agree.
And get that question.
So I would recommend adding that statement at the very end of this policy and leave the rest of the policy, approve the policy as amended.
Have a motion to approve five point six oh one with the change.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposition. Thank you.
The next policy is staff time schedules, five point six oh two. All of this is federal law. It's the federal wage hour law. You got exempt employees, non-exempt employees. Managers are exempt, teachers are exempt, because they're professionals, assistants, EAs, bus drivers, custodians, they're non-exempt. They get overtime paid, time and a half for any hours worked over forty hours in any given week, a seven-day period. We, as a government entity, can, uh, grant them comp time, time and a half for each hour worked over forty, if the employee chooses to accept that. We are choosing, you can go up to two hundred and forty hours. This policy will allow an employee to accumulate sixty hours of comp time. You really don't wanna go more than sixty hours to accrue, to keep up with, and things like that. Are, are there any questions of this policy? I wanted to explain that policy. Mr. Campbell had one, I remembered it, about do we budget for overtime hours for these individuals? That would be a Mr. Anderson question.
We do not budget for the overtime. What we are anticipating is that the principal will use comp time, so we're not paying actual cash out whenever possible, or make whatever adjustments they have to make, but we do not budget for overtime in, in our purpose budget.
All right, so if, if an hourly person works, and they're, and that position is based on X number of dollars a year or X number of hours per year, which...
It can be both. Uh, on our wage scale, on our salary scales, EAs have a yearly salary, salary listed. Now, if they, if they work under forty hours each week, they're gonna get that much money at the end of the year with all their paychecks. If they work over forty hours one week, we have to divide that salary into an hourly wage, and you pay them time and a half for that salary.
Okay.
For that hourly wage.
But that would, we would not be taking away from their total number of hours per year...
Just adding to it.
...in order to give them the time and a half hours that they deserve.
Correct. Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Ballard?
Uh, is the comp time, uh, does it carry over at the end of fiscal year? Is it used it or lose, or lose it?
No, you can't use it or lose it. That's against federal law. Uh, we can, we can pay it out at the end of calendar year. At, in June thirtieth, we can pay it out, because you really wanna pay them out at their, the rate that they accrued it, rather than pay them at the rate, their, their new rate, that goes into effect July first, each year, we hope.
In practice, are we paying overtime, or are we using comp time?
A little bit of both. It's the employee's choice, but it's up to the supervisors and the principals to police that. It has to be pre-approved. There are times when H R people are working during the summer, during the spring, to get individuals hired. Ninety-five percent of the time, they use comp time.
Any other questions on this policy? Five, six oh two. Do we have a motion to approve on first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Next policy is staff meetings, five point six oh three. The first part is T S B A recommendation. I really liked it. The line ten through nineteen is exactly what our current policy reads, P R one. That is what the teachers are used to, that's what the principals are used to, and we do a good job of abiding by that. Basically, faculty meetings can happen two times a month for an hour and a half hours.
Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any question, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Okay. Next policy is five point six oh five, staff gifts and solicitations. It's pretty self-explanatory, state law. Don't go on vacation courtesy of a corporation.
I did have a question, but, so I guess you missed this one, but, um, in our old policy, and I'm just gonna read it, since, uh, it said, "This policy shall not apply to legitimate campaign contributions which are properly reported in accordance with the state of Tennessee election laws," and, or with Murfreesboro City Schools, and it's not in this one. Maybe Kelly can explain. Did this get dropped, or...
I guess it just got dropped.
Okay.
It could be out of...
I mean, I didn't see the, I was just trying to figure out why.
Should we add it to this one, or political activities?
I think it would go best in this one, because the political activities is a little bit on the other side.
Okay.
So if we can add it to this one?
You do wanna add it to this? Read that statement again, please, sir.
I would, no, I'm just gonna read it off the, hold on a second. It says right at the very end. It looked like it even got clipped and pasted to our policy. "This policy shall not apply to legitimate campaign contributions which are properly reported in accordance with the state of Tennessee election laws when the Murfreesboro City Schools system employee or representative is a candidate for public office." And I didn't see that in our new one, so I was just trying to figure out. And I'm sure it's just because we're looking at a T S B A boilerplate policy, and for some reason, it was in our old policy, so I was trying to figure out...
So what you're saying, then, is if an employee runs for a political office, they cannot receive gifts?
No, they can't.
Contributions?
They can, 'cause if, as long as they're properly reported according to the state law, which you have to follow anyway, 'cause...
Right.
You know, we all know that, 'cause we ran for office, but...
A parent of a student could make a contribution...
To...
To Jared's campaign.
Your campaign.
Yeah. Or even employees' campaign.
Well, that's not a thing, and employees do run.
Yes, yeah. Mm-hmm. So I think we do need to include that, just to make sure people are aware, and, you know...
Okay. Also, Mr. Jarrett had a great point in his email. In line two, in line three, it says, "Employees of the board..." Let's change that to district. The board only really has one employee. Or we can just cross out of the district, just employees.
That's what I think you've done in other policies.
Yes.
Where, where are you reading it from?
Line three.
Line three, and, and, um...
Employees...
Five point five oh six.
Lisa may have changed that.
Yes. Oh, okay. Never mind.
Oh. She's on top of it.
Too quick for me.
She already changed it.
Oh, well...
Okay, 'cause I was looking, too.
Is that a policy?
All right, we have a motion to approve five point six oh five.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next policy.
Political activities. I don't think we currently have this policy in our, uh, on our website, so the new policy, T S B A recommends five point six oh six. It talks what employees can and cannot do on our school grounds regarding political elections, things like that. I recommend approval.
I move to approve.
I have a question.
Hold. No.
All right, let me get a second to that motion to approve.
Second.
All right, Ms. Settles now. Ms. Smith?
So when it's, um, when you're on, this is a scenario, when you're on school property and you have a magnet or a sticker on your car, is that, does that mean signage?
This states, uh, for system-owned property signage, if it is your own vehicle, yes, you are allowed to do so, unless, Ms. Baker, corrects me?
Every year, I have to research that, and I do not remember the answer right now.
Well, I think it, the...
I think it's okay if it's your personal vehicle. I know bumper stickers are okay.
But where it gets tricky, and there's more A G.'s opinions on it, is when people start putting these huge signs in the back of their pickup trucks versus just a bumper sticker or something. I've researched it, but I don't recall the answer right off the top of my head. I'd have to look it up and give it to you, make sure I'm correct.
I think we need to know. I mean, that's...
Yeah.
The sign, it, the definition of sign, whether it's bumper sticker versus, you know, a much larger...
There's so many ways to advertise now.
Right. And that's why the answer kind of, it's tweaked and changed every year as new, new ideas come out.
Right.
So it's a very fact-specific situation when you look at it, to, to research it.
So an employee after, when, after school's out, fifteen minutes after, when they're off the clock, so to speak, if they wanna campaign, they can, because, right? 'Cause it says...
On their own time.
Yeah.
On their own time, even though they may be on school property. So if I walk up and...
No, I don't think so, because it says, "But are prohibited from using system-owned property to engage in political activity." System-owned property includes, but under limits to building signage, et cetera, et cetera.
That's system-owned property. That's not my property. My property is my property. So if I, as an individual, walk up to you at three-thirty and school's out at two-forty-five and ask you to vote for John Doe, I could do that, 'cause I'm not, I'm not using system-owned property, which includes building, signage, message boards, blah, blah, so forth and so on. That's what I'm getting at. Am I right?
I think you're wrong. I think it, where it says, "You can do it on your own time, and you can campaign all you want to on your own time, but not on system-owned property."
Right.
I think that's how it reads.
That's the way I'm reading it.
Okay.
Like on the playground, you couldn't meet Jared in the back on the playground and hand him a bunch of your flyers, say, "Vote for me," because you're still on system property. That's the way I read it.
Okay.
You can send emails out from your work email, or use your work computer to campaign for someone.
You can't.
You cannot. You would have, you can't use school-owned property, which would include computers, our internet system, to send that out.
But my own personal computer, I can.
Right.
Right, okay. We need, okay, I got a question. I would like for you to research, if you don't mind, a little bit about the signage that we're talking about, and with that in mind, I would suggest that we postpone first reading on this policy until we get some answers.
You have a, you have a motion, too, in a second, but, um, so, yeah, okay. I know it says message boards, and this may be because it's old language. I don't see anything about social media. You know, we have a Facebook page, we have a Twitter account, um, people go on the Facebook page and put, "Vote for Joe Schmo," and, you know, right on the, and it's a system, isn't that system-owned? So I didn't know if we need to include social media pages on, on this list of things.
Good point.
I guess I kinda lumped it in with the electronic equipment and email account.
Were you thinking it was a message board? You still use the message board, so...
At the laundry mat.
Okay.
We, we, we have a motion, am I correct, to approve this as written?
Yes, I made that one.
Don't we? Okay.
I feel safe to approve it on first reading, and we can make corrections on it next time.
Okay.
After research.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Aye.
Aye.
Call the robe.
So we're, we're voting to...
Approve it on first reading.
Approve it on first reading, or...
Wait till I do the research first.
That's what we're gonna, yeah.
Could you change it?
That's what we're trying to...
Yeah, um, it may just be cleaner if you wait and let me do the research and revise it and bring it back to you.
Well, we still, we've still got a...
We've got a motion on the floor. Still got a motion on the floor.
We've got to vote on the motion, unless, unless you want to withdraw the motion in a second.
I'll withdraw the motion.
All right, will you withdraw the second?
Reluctantly, yes.
All right, so we will postpone, and do we have to have a vote on withdrawing the motion? We don't, do we?
No.
Okay, all right. Okay, next policy, Mr. Ringstaff, you're doing well.
Our, our last policy, our last, uh, five point.
Not well, until next.
Last policy until next.
Our last policy tonight.
There's never a last policy.
We have quite a few more to go, but not tonight.
Director of Schools, five point eight zero zero, uh, you've got six lines there. The Director of Schools should be the Chief Executive Officer of the school system, and she'll have, under the direction of the Board, general supervision of all the public schools, personnel, and departments of the school system. The Director of Schools is responsible for the management of the schools under the Board's policy and is accountable to the Board. Director of Schools, uh.
I appreciate you reading this one, Ralph, you haven't read any of the others. I'm just making note of that.
I would like to recommend a change at their discretion instead of his/her. At their discretion may delegate any of their duties.
But it wouldn't be right.
We, that's what we've done consistently with the others.
Or just say it's director's duties, instead of using a pronoun.
The Director of Schools may delegate any duties to other school personnel.
Yes.
If you don't have him, her, or they.
Okay.
No himming and hawing.
Mr. Barrett?
I saw this in our old policy, and I'll just throw it out there, and you guys, you know, that's why we're here discussing it. Lines ten and eleven on our old policy says, "The delegation of power or duty, however, shall not relieve the Director of Schools of responsibility for the action taken under such delegation." So if she delegates it to somebody, it still falls on her if something goes wrong or something. But we don't have to include that language, I just saw it, and I thought maybe it'd be, but I'll leave it up to the Board. I noticed it was brought from the. Yeah.
Yeah, this is TSBA's, but I'm.
I like it too.
It's either written or unwritten, it's the way it is, so.
We want to have, we have, we need a motion to approve the policy.
I have a question on it.
I'm sorry, Mr. Suddles.
If I could, if I may, the directors also, and correct me if I'm on, the de facto Secretary of the Board somewhat, like that, does that not, is, it does not be put in?
She's the Secretary of the Board.
I know she's the Secretary of the Board, however, and I, I could be reading it wrong, but I, I know I read it, Linda. Did I read something like that, Linda?
Um.
Because you're not keeping very good notes if you are the Secretary, I'm just gonna tell you. So she.
How delegated that?
She delegated that out, but it still falls under.
Oh, man.
Because she is hired to, you're the secret, you're her secretary.
Right, but I think, I think where that would fall into play, I think, is if there were any question about that, that, and I think this was, has been brought up before, but basically, I'm, I'm your only employee. And so then that leaves, that leaves to me to delegate out what's, what's supposed to be delegated out, and also, in some cases, what's going to be law.
Yeah. That was just a question.
Mr. Barrett?
I was just gonna make a motion we approve with the change that I suggested, but.
And what changes that?
That, that line ten, eleven from our old policy added to our new policy.
Okay. Do we also going to change the Director of Schools?
Yes, that too.
And delegate to other school personnel, do you want?
Yeah, with the, the language.
Against the part.
Yeah, and that changes you suggested as well, mhm.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the policy with the changes noted?
I think Jared did.
I did, yes, I'll move to approve.
All right, Mr. Barrett made the motion, Ms. Smith seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, and there is none. Thank you. Thank you very much, wonderfully well done. All right, we've done, all right, uh, we now have reports and information. Enrollment.
Hey, your enrollment report shows that we're up two hundred and thirty-six students over the end of last year, at eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-three total students, where our pupil teacher ratio is at twenty point zero one for all grades together. K three is nineteen point three, and four through six is twenty-one point one eight. Our attendance rate for the first period was ninety-five percent. Hopefully, the Minister of Health will help on that, get up to ninety-six or ninety-seven. Wanted to call to your attention that overall Creek scales and Case and Lane are all pretty much at their max right now. We can do a few more students in each one, but, uh, we are projecting to have to open up another school on the west side of town, uh, within, not this coming year, but the following year after that. So we're looking at this year's numbers, and then one more year of numbers before we open up a new school. So that's our, our projection. Interesting, this year is different, exactly opposite of last year. Last year, the schools that were more close into the city grew more, and the outlying schools did not grow. This year is exactly the opposite. Are closer to the city have not grown, and the outlying schools have grown. So just exactly opposite from what, what we dealt with last year. Mr. Barrett?
So for those three sk, schools you just mentioned, if we grow the same number as we did this year, wh- what's the plan? Are we gonna stack them, our portables, or?
We'll park buses outside for outdoor classrooms. They can, they can maneuver some things around within the schools, as far as they have some extra spaces that they're using right now for breakout areas, and they'll have to probably have those breakouts in different locations, so they can get the classroom space.
Open up a classroom, so, okay. Okay.
I can't believe overall Creek.
Yeah, that's, wow, I was just bragging to myself.
What did we do wrong?
What, with the number?
On the.
We didn't close the gate.
Yeah, no, that's exactly.
And we did not allow any, anyone to come into the school that was not in that zone. We stopped anything like that. What's happening there is you're getting the apartments, and all the construction is going on, on a very rapid pace right now. And so those numbers are going to build, and depending on the price point, if it's a lower-priced home, meaning somewhere, say, between two and three hundred thousand, there are going to be more younger children than if it's a higher-end home of four, five hundred thousand. We tend to get that type of mix on the west side of town right now. We're getting a lot of students moving in that area, and, and the areas that are, are growing for future development is in that area as well.
Mr. Anderson, do we have any way of more pinpointing our enrollment in the first two and three months? You know, the first month, we were two hundred and sixty above. Last month, it was two oh seven, now this month, it's two thirty-six. What, what are we doing, or?
Uh, it's a great question, and here's what happens, and when school starts, we have, the, the schools work with basic enrollment from last year, who was promoted, and then new students as they come in. How many sixth graders would leave to go to the county, and then how many kindergartners, we expect. What happens is they hold those files, and if a student doesn't come to school at all, they hold it until it's requested by another school, whether it be in the county, in another state, or whatever. So that still shows on the reports that I give you. These reports, the one that's here is the one that goes into the state. State looks at, looks at snapshots, and only those snapshots. So, in fact, the first one, as far as the state's concerned, doesn't count. It's second, and third, and sixth, and seventh periods are the ones that count. So it's all really an adjustment period, but we really, every day, the first two weeks of school, we're getting numbers to look at for our enrollment and for our pupil teacher ratios, and to see if we need to move some slots around. To get it exactly right, I don't see it with as much mobility as we have in this town. I don't see it getting any, really any better in that first month.
Okay.
The other thing that, that Gary does is he's very in touch with planning, and you get a report, I guess, monthly, or more, even more frequently than that. And so it does depend, he will go in and look at those price points on those houses to be able to try to project what changes that he's going to see at the beginning of school, and also throughout the year.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Growth is here, continues. All right, you have, uh, that's, that's all. Right?
Personnel report.
Personnel report?
Really, it's a little slow, I mean, certified resignations, we, I think we've had one, and then we're still hiring classified individuals. And licensed personnel, we've had to hire some for growth.
All right, anything else come before the Board, Mr. Barrett?
For other business, you know, we've done this, we did this last year, a few other years. Do we want to do another joint meeting with our other school board in the county here with the legislative delegation? It's early enough out, that maybe we could pick a date if it's up, if you think that'd be a good idea, talk about the upcoming legislative session.
Well, it will be our time to host, won't it?
Yeah, I think so, we, they hosted last time.
Yep.
We, uh, at, as you know, I just got back from superintendent's conference. Uh, they are expecting this session to be extremely fast.
So it'd probably be worthwhile to get on top of it then, if we're gonna do something.
Because of the election.
We would want to do anything until.
No, you wouldn't, but they're just expecting, once that session starts, they're expecting it to be a fast session. That is probably going to be a shorter session than they've had in the past because of the elections coming up, and the people needing to get out to campaign. That's not going to affect when you have it, but I think it's just going to mean that whatever changes happen, and whatever bills are introduced, is going to move pretty fast.
Yeah.
But the election is two thousand eighteen, you're right.
They can't raise money until they're out of session.
That's right.
And that's why they want to get out.
Right.
That's it.
But we know we're not going to have all the same six that we have today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So whether or not we want to, well, I don't know, it's, it's something.
I think it's worthwhile, but that's.
It'd be in session, though, and.
They would, it's, yes, you're, you're right.
Yeah, yeah.
No matter what, they would be in session.
We'll be next spring.
I think it's a good idea.
I think so, too.
I think it's a great idea. All right, do we want to try to do this, uh, before the new year?
I, I think so, we need to, if we're going to talk about legislative stuff. Because they start moving right away, especially about voter.
And I think it's important for them to hear this year, particularly ahead of time, because I don't think you're going to have that much time during the session to really have those discussions.
So any, any suggested dates?
I don't have any sugge, do you want to talk to their Jeff over there, their chair, and see if he's got some dates, or if they're even open to it? I know in the past, they've, they've had a few members over there that have, uh, debated the value of doing that or not, but.
Yeah, we do December last year, that's awful hard.
Yeah, I think.
Always hard to schedule.
If we could, you know, it's October, you know, if we can find, but that's pretty busy, too, but.
Yeah, October's right here.
Talked, I, yeah, if you could bring some dates, maybe you could bring some dates back, next, our next meeting.
Don't want to forget, uh, next Tuesday at.
Mitchell Nelson.
Mitchell Nelson, six thirty.
Mhm.
Uh, will that be in the gym? Well, that's true. Library, I think, for a day. Okay.
Next Tuesday.
Ms. Baker?
Next month will be your, um, Board Chair and Vice Chair elections. Y'all traditionally have them in September, in order to, to ensure that the, the Board and Chair, Vice Chair can go to the TSBA training that's held in October, I believe.
Right, so that will be your next meeting.
That'll be the next meeting.
That'll be in September.
Okay. All right. Uh, Mr. Ballard and Ms. Smith?
Uh, you reminded me, let's see, next, it's the twenty-first, we go to Tullahoma, right?
Yes.
Some of us, I, I'll be going.
Thursday.
And so I'll be planning on that. And then I just wanted to ask, uh, first of all, thank Mr. Anderson for the update on Black Fox, and how it was going there, but can you give me another update, as, or the Board, another update as to,
Yes, two hundred.
are we finished, is everything buttoned up, and the punch list is complete, and?
Punch list is not complete, there's still items they have to do. Typically, we have a year to get all punch list things done. I spoke with the architect today, because I went over there the other day and saw some things that I thought should have been completed already, and he was going to get with them. It's simple things down to the, getting the right keys and master keys are things that we have to deal with. But there, there's still things that need to be doing.
But the teachers now have occu, are occupying the new rooms?
Yes.
They got transitioned into that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, uh, Wi-Fi is good for them?
They actually have the best Wi-Fi in the district right now, because it's totally new and.
Not all clocked up yet.
One situation at Black Fox, and I'm, I am sure probably that you are aware of it, on the end where we added the six classrooms, that area out there that holds water, any idea on what they're gonna do?
Yes, sir. Uh, we put in for a, where they're going to put a drain in there, because it has to drain out. They're going to do a drain, and there, the architect is putting together the drawings for how that drain will connect to the, uh, to the sewer line. But yes, it has to be in there, it's like a little lake out there right now.
Now, will the fence have to be moved?
We're gonna leave the fence there.
Okay. If it does, yeah, it's been holding water, as you well know, I don't have, you know, but for several days. I thought the people were going to fish there into the tide lake the other day. Ms. Smith?
So I've been thinking about, Mr. Ballard was bringing this up before, lots of people on the street have been bringing this up, about the ten ready scores never coming back on time. So is there, I just kind of want the other Board members to be thinking about if we should write some kind of letter saying, hey, why do we keep paying money to, to get scores that are coming in six months later?
That was brought up, actually, at the superintendent's meeting by Chuck Eggle. He gave us a prep on Sunday afternoon, and he said that he was hearing more complaints from legislators now, understanding what the impact is of being October before you actually start getting information. We, when we talk about doing professional development, we talk about doing it in May, because the mindset has to be, if you really want to change something, you really need to do it almost before the teachers are out. So the idea of getting the scores, you're exactly right, they, they need to be coming in May or June. It's by October, it's, you, you already have personnel in place, you already have your programs in place. So I think that's something that, that would be good to discuss with legislators, because he did mention that there was probably more discontent because the legislators are understanding what it does to a school district to get in those scores and, uh, at this time of year.
Well, I don't know how you know if the teachers are good or not.
That's exactly right.
I mean, we're, we're talking about the T-VS policy involving that, and here you have no way to judge.
That's right.
But you also run into the problem of if you're going to do any kind of ability grouping, where am I going to put Claudia, where am I going to go put Jared if I don't have these scores?
That's right. And the principals, it, it, it does become an issue, because if you are going to try, when you, when you think about placing teachers, you want, you want to have your strengths where you need them. And, and it's, it's hard to do that when it's October, when you find out what the results are. It, it's just almost impossible, or if there needs to be any kind of administrative change, or if we need to change programs, or if we need to change curriculum, that's, that's already done. And so it is, it is frustrating, and, and, uh, I think that's something that, that it would make sense to talk to the legislators about.
But in addition to talking to the legislators, not just letters, should we, would, I would see that there would be some value to our writing a letter to the.
I think so. I think the funding piece coming from the legislature is part of the reason for discussing that with the legisla, but I think certainly you can make your, I think the Commissioner is aware of the discontent that is out there. I think superintendents have made that pretty clear. But I think it is good for the Commissioner, and particularly the legislature, to hear from school boards. I think, I think they finally understand the impact this has, but it's exactly what you said, Ms. Smith. It's, it's hard to make change with something in October or November, when you're, and you're facing the test again in April.
Do, I know we do, I don't know who it is, but you would know, have someone who could draft such a letter from the Board, and we send a copy of that, we all sign it, and send a copy of that letter to our legislative delegation, one to each one, and also one to the Commissioner.
I'll have, I'll have a draft of that for you to see before your next meeting.
Just send it out in an email, we can look at it, and then maybe have it next time we meet. Is that too quick?
No.
For your people?
This, this people will have it done.
There are a lot of other things going on today, too. I'm, I'm trying to be. All right, anything else come before this Board tonight?
Just a comment.
Mr. Ballard?
The TSBA must have some juice to put that in front of the legislators. All, that's a state issue, right?
It is.
Some horsepower from, from them to put that front and center.
You can recommend that as a, not a policy, a resolution for our upcoming delegation assembly. And it, you have until the 20th, anybody can submit. So you could go on there and submit it, Ms. Smith, if you want to, and submit it.
And what you might want to do is just take that copy of the letter and, and send a copy to Wayne Blair, who's the, he's still the President, I think, of TSBA.
And we could do it as a Board and submit it as our resolution saying. And then TSBA would get behind it for the whole year.
I think we'd have more oomph if it came from our school board in, as a resolution to the TSBA.
Yes, yes. Oh, absolutely.
But I, and also send copies to our legislative.
Right, all of that.
Yeah.
Add in addition to the legislators, the Commissioner, Candace McQueen. This would be to go to the convention.
Yes. You have till the 20th, so.
All right, anything else coming before this Board tonight? Thank you very much. I know you did some, some good hard work and some readings and that's, that's the advantage of getting policies out enough time for all of us to look over. I appreciate, and I think we all do. I think we've had a good meeting. We've gotten a lot accomplished. Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, any second. All in favor, good night.